Good afternoon. The January 22, 2025, meeting of the Board of Estimates is reconvened and called to order. The purpose of this portion of the meeting is for the Board to consider rate adjustments to our water utility. The Board continues to meet in a hybrid format. For those here in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. For those attending virtually, if you desire an opportunity to speak, we ask that you please keep yourself on mute until the Chair recognizes you. When you're called upon, please announce your name and organization and speak loudly and clearly as you present. I would like to note at the top that while those testifying may at times be passionate, we expect that members of this Board and members of the public will keep order and ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. Persons who are disruptive may be asked to leave the meeting or may be ejected from this meeting. This will apply to those attending in person as well as those attending online. For members of the public who have questions and concerns about your water bills, I want to let you know that representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Department of Public Works are positioned at tables outside of the council chambers and are ready to help. Our agenda for this evening, for this reconvened meeting of the Board of Estimates is to reconsider the Department of Public Works' proposed rate adjustments to our utility. Shortly, I will turn the meeting over to DPW to provide that presentation. Several residents have expressed a desire to testify on this matter. Specifically, the comptroller's office received 54 statements of opposition. Of those, nine have requested to participate in their statements in person here, and one will be participating online, and that is also an option for others. Twenty-eight explicitly opted not to present their statement orally, and seventeen did not confirm either way. I will call on the nine individuals who have indicated that they want to deliver their statement of opposition here with the Board. Everyone will have two minutes to provide their testimony. We're going to have a clock, much like a shot clock. I'm going to give you the heads-up signal when you're down to 10 seconds. We'll ask that you rap, just out of respect for everyone's time, and we'll be keeping close time. After we have had public testimony, I will turn to my fellow Board members for their questions and mine as well. In the interest of keeping this meeting to the time allotted, I will turn it over directly to the Department of Public Works for their presentation on this matter. The item can be found under SB 2510155, Department of Public Works. Mr. Garbark, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Comptroller, honorable members of the Board of Estimates. I am Matthew Garbark, interim Deputy Director for the Department of Public Works. We do have a presentation, I believe. It, yes, there it is now. On December 18, 2024, DPW proposed water, sewer, and stormwater rate increases for fiscal years '25 through '27, and requested that the Board hold a public hearing to consider passage today. Over the past month, DPW has held four public meetings in various regions of the city to engage and educate the public on these proposed increases. To date, the date and locations of the meetings were as follows: the Northwest Commander's Meeting on January 9 at 7:00 p.m., this was a hybrid meeting; the Northeast Community Organization Meeting on January 11 at 10:00 a.m., this was a virtual meeting; a January 15 in-person meeting at the War Memorial at 6:00 p.m., and a January 21 in-person meeting at the Southeast Anchor Library at 6:00 p.m. We spoke to hundreds of residents and received many comments. We worked to answer as many questions as we could during the meeting, and if we ran out of time, we did follow up with the residents directly to provide that information. We will admit that this is a tough request and that the feedback that we received was negative. But please know that we would not be requesting these increases were it not absolutely essential to operate and improve the systems that we have. I will briefly discuss the proposal and the reasons behind it. I am also joined by other representatives from the Department of Public Works to answer any questions that the Board may have. For the remainder of fiscal year '25, we are proposing a 3% increase for water and a 15% increase for sewer. These rates will take effect, if approved, on February 1, 2025. Taken together, these increases will result in an average 9.66% increase to a customer's bill. For fiscal years '26 and '27, we are proposing that water and sewer rates increase by 9% and that stormwater rates increase by 3% each year. These increases would take effect July 1 of both 2025 and 2026. The average increase to a customer's bill would be around 8.45%. Next slide. I mentioned the proposed increase to the fiscal year '25 rates would average a 9.66% increase on a customer's bill. Looking at a household of around four to five individuals which consumes six CCFs or six units of water, this is a little over $12.50. I should note that the rates are largely based on the amount of water utilized, so the less water used, the less a customer pays. Next slide. These rates and rate increases are in line with other utilities around the region. This chart shows how the rates of peer utilities have increased over the past three years, sometimes significantly, while our rates have remained the same. For example, for fiscal year '24, Pittsburgh increased its water and sewer rates by an average of over 14%, and Philadelphia increased their rates by over 12%. In comparison, we are proposing an average increase for fiscal year '25 of 9.66% and an average increase of 8.45% for fiscal years '26 and '27. Next slide. As I noted in December and as we've discussed at our public meetings, compliance, increased project costs, and inflation are driving these rate increases. In terms of compliance, our wastewater utility is under two consent decrees to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows as well as to make improvements to our wastewater treatment plants. These efforts, while necessary, have been costly. Indeed, overall utility expenses have increased by nearly 38% over the past couple of years. In the past two years alone, we spent over $230 million on improvements at the Back River and Patapsco wastewater treatment plants. But we are seeing results. Both plants are now operating at peak efficiency levels and have been in full compliance with their permits since 2023. In terms of project costs, we have faced two major issues. The first is increasing bid prices. We've seen an increasing number of bids exceed our engineering estimates. As an example, for the Back River Egg-Shaped Digestor Rehabilitation Project, we estimated its cost at $78 million. But the lowest bid we received above, was 14% above that estimate at $89 million. Just this morning, we requested the Board reject two solicitations because the lowest bids we received were over 30% higher than our estimates. The second project-related issue is the increasing number of emergency projects. Such projects require immediate action, which can be quite expensive. The sinkhole at Lake Montebello required an emergency rehabilitation of a 108-inch storm drain and is estimated to cost $30 million. To put this in perspective, the entire Stormwater Utility Capital Program for fiscal year '25 is $72 million. This one project accounts for nearly 42% of the entire stormwater capital budget. The final and most noticeable driver is inflation. Since 2021, the Consumer Price Index for urban consumers has increased 19.4%. Inflation has affected everything from the price of chemicals to construction materials to labor costs. Next slide. There has been some discussion on our reserve accounts and how they relate to our bond rating. Very briefly, DPW maintains various funding reserves. We have a legally required operating reserve, the equivalent of which is 12% of our operating costs. We also have what's called a rate stabilization fund, which is used to address deficits in accounts should they occur, as the utilities cannot legally run at a profit or at a loss. Finally, our residual fund is the bank account for the utilities. This fund handles all the revenues that come into the account and handles all the expenses that go out of the account. That fund fluctuates by hundreds of millions of dollars throughout the year and is used to handle all unforeseen costs and increase, such as increased materials and emergency costs. Now, in terms of bond rating, we, as is the case with any entity, want to have the highest bond rating possible. This is a sign of financial health, and it lowers interest rates for borrowing. But I can say definitively that these proposed rate increases are not concerned with that. Increasing the bond rating looks at much more than just the rate increases. That involves debt management, restructuring of debt, and looking at strengthening internal financial controls. I wanted to just mention these because I want to assure everyone that this rate increase is going to the operations and the capital improvements for the utilities. Next slide. That being said, we, of course, don't want our bond rating to decrease. There were also some questions on the financial impact of changes in bond rating. Essentially, a drop in rating corresponds to a half percentage point increase in interest rates. Now, if we look at $600 million in borrowing, a half-percent interest rate increase would lead to a little more than $2 million in additional cost annually. Compared to our overall budget, this is small, but it does add up over the years. Next slide. To put all this in perspective, here is a breakdown of the proposed costs for the wastewater utility if the proposed rate increases are approved. Note that nearly 98% of the entire cost goes directly into the utility, either in terms of operating costs, equipment upgrades, debt service for capital improvements, and additional pay-go capital funding. Just a little over 2% accounts for bad debt and reserve funding. Next slide. This is the same with the water utility, where just over 97% of the costs go to operations, equipment upgrades, debt service for capital financing, and direct expenditures for capital projects. So I want to be clear that nearly all of the revenue that the proposed rate increases would go directly into other operations or capital improvements for our utilities. Next slide. In summary, DPW is proposing to increase water and sewer rates by 3% and 15% respectfully respectfully for fiscal year '25, and would, that would take effect February 1 of this year. We are also proposing to increase water and sewer rates by 9% and stormwater rates by 3% in fiscal years '26 and '27. The increases would take effect July 1 of both 2025 and 2026.
Mr. Comptroller?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't mean to interrupt other than to say that your effective dates probably should be over the years rather than in rows with, because it looks like there's one effective date for water and then different ones for sewer and stormwater, but those are really the effective dates for FY '25, '26, and '27?
You're right. That got transposed. I apologize for that. Yes, yes, that did get transposed. The second rates would take effect July 1 of both years. Thank you for pointing that out. So thank you for your time, and DPW respectfully requests the Board approve these proposed increases. We would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Garbark. As I mentioned before, we have nine individuals who wished to present statements in opposition, and we will move to hear from them now. First, we have Nicole Fabricant.
She's coming.
All right. Karima Gibson.
I'm here.
Karima, if you could come on up and just introduce yourself, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Hello. Karima Gibson, I'm a Baltimore City resident. I understand that my position is because I don't think enough has been done to maintain that businesses also pay their fair share. I think there are some glitches in this system that we need to address before we implement these kind of increases on Baltimore City residents. As we know, the income of Baltimore City is about 50 grand, which is relatively low, and water increases like this will have a devastating effect on a plethora of communities within the Black Butterfly. I don't think that enough education was put out to ensure that everybody in the city was aware of what was transpiring. If you're not technically savvy, then a lot of our elders would laugh out of putting their opposition in play because they didn't have anybody teach them how to do it digitally. And that's about it for right now, and hopefully all of you do live in the city, and you will endorse some of these increases with us. That's it. All right.
Two minutes, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You did it in one, so you've set a bar for the rest.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next, we have Danielle Dykes.
Can y'all hear me? Check, check. So my name is Daniel. I've been here for 10 years in Baltimore City. I grew up on well water, so just the concept of like charging people for a universal unalienable right on this earth is pretty ridiculous, but I get that we're not that radical yet. I would want to ask y'all, do you all drink city water? Okay, well, the idea of like putting the cost at a flat rate on Baltimore residents, you're going to be asking people to choose between food and water. Like a $20 raise in somebody's bill is going to be catastrophic for people that live at or below the poverty line. Now, I know we're not the county, but the county does a much more progressive way of paying for it with property taxes. And where does all of our proper taxes go in this city? It goes to BPD. So would you rather have like a life-sustaining thing that you need to survive or money for police, sniper rifles for them, for example? Like, I don't, it's hard for me to like really offer an argument because it feels ridiculous to force like Baltimoreans, especially that live in the Black Butterfly, to shoulder this cost. It's ridiculous. And meanwhile, you have major institutions and hospitals that don't pay anything for their water. So like, like, all due respect, like, please do your job in a way that does not impact poor people in the city. Please do not like hike the cost. There's other ways to pay for it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dykes. Comptroller Henry?
Yeah, I, we try not to get into a back-and-forth with people, but I do want to just say if there's a misunderstanding out there, tax-exempt institutions may not pay property tax, but they do pay water and sewer rate. So just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. Thank you, Comptroller Henry. Next, I have Abigail Ullman.
Honorable members of the Baltimore City Board of Estimates, thank you for taking, for hosting this hearing. My name is Abigail Ullman, and I'm a renter in Abel in Baltimore City. I'm a member of the With Us, For Us Coalition and a chapter leader with Resource Generation Baltimore Chapter. I'm testifying today as an individual in opposition to the proposed water and sewage rate hike. This rate hike will negatively affect all Baltimore residents, as you know, and as DPW has said, will raise the average customer sewer bill by 15% and the water bill by 3% starting in about nine days on February 1, which does not give residents enough time to adequately prepare for a rate hike that could be $12, a $12 increase per month. Its cumulative impact will create a huge financial strain on city residents. If our wealthy, tax-exempt hospitals and universities paid their fair share through the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreement, the revenue connected, collected through the pilot agreement could go toward addressing our outdated water and sewer infrastructure instead of burdening Baltimore City residents with the cost. Every year, these institutions utilize $47 million in city services, and while they do also, as we've heard, pay for their own water bills, they only contribute $6 million to city services annually. These institutions need to pay up, and funding the upgrade of outdated water and sewer infrastructure to make our water cleaner and city safer would be a great start. Access to clean, potable water is a human right, and Baltimore City residents should not have to choose between buying food and paying for water and sewage bills. I urge the Board to reject the price hike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Mayor?
This is my turn, the comptroller. I'll take a turn, just so that everyone understands. I think that Mr. Garbark tried to do it, but he should have did it in a much simpler way. Property taxes doesn't go into the water system. This is utility within itself. The only money that goes in or out of it is what goes into the water system. So we just have to, everyone has to have that understanding. What happens with our nonprofit institutions is a conversation for another day, but we have to understand, especially for our members in the press, that when we're telling the stories about this unfortunate rate hike, that we understand that the water system is its own separate utility. It does not, your property taxes does not go into the water system at all, only when you pay your water bill.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. Antonia Brooks?
My name is Antonia Brooks. I live in the 3rd District. I oppose the water and sewage rate hike. I am a physical therapist rehab technician at a hospital where I worked 23 years. I live with my father in a home that the family owned since 1985. We currently pay $400 per year for water. With just the two of us in the house, that's too high. My father is retired and needs his social security retirement payments to pay for his medicine, which is also cost too much. I pay the mortgage so my father can afford his medication. I can't afford to pay more for our water because we have other expensive, particularly BG&E. Every year, the wealth tax-exempt universities and hospitals use $47 million in city services, but they only contribute $6 million annually. If they paid their fair share through the pilot agreement, the boost revenue could go towards fixing our water steward system instead of passing the burden on to working families like mine. Institutions should pay for city services like all city residents do. I urge you to reject the water and sewage rate hike and hold our tax-exempt hospitals and universities accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Lorraine Aricat.
Good evening, members of the Board of Estimates. My name is Lorraine Aricat. I live in District 9 in southwest Baltimore. I'm also the Senior Policy Analyst for 1199 SCIU, United Healthcare Workers East. We oppose these water and sewage rate hikes because they will disproportionately impact low-income residents in Baltimore City, all while our wealthier residents and institutions fail to pay their fair share of the city services they utilize. These rate hikes on Baltimoreans are not simply necessary challenges to fund our outdated sewer systems, but a reflection of decades of economic policy that disproportionately impacts Black residents that have endured economic disempowerment for generations. Water service is unaffordable for one-third of Baltimore residents. We need solutions that will increase water access to everyone irrespective of income. Department of Public Works provides vital and needed services to the residents of Baltimore City, and so I really implore members of this Board to really think about where does the revenue come from so that it does not burden our low-income Black residents in Baltimore. As mentioned before, the testimonies that have highlighted our tax-exempt hospitals and universities is an effort to think about where are the wealth disparities in Baltimore? How can we make sure that we are bringing in revenue that will invest in those underfunded, outdated systems in Baltimore? And so lastly, we call on city leadership to make sure that there is a promise to listen to the voices of Baltimore as we oppose these water rate hikes and also ensure that we have a fair and transparent pilot process, one that includes communities, workers at the table with the city and the institutions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Aricat, and apologies for mispronouncing your name. Paula Parham.
I'm still not here.
Wendy Bozell.
Well, thank you so much for hearing our ideas today. My main focus is there's three revenue streams that I don't think we're looking at that would help pay for our water bills here. Instead of putting the burden on all the citizens of Baltimore City, we provide $1.8 million residential business customers making up the city of Baltimore, and we provide water to Baltimore, Howard, Harford, Carroll, and Androna Counties. So my daughter, she gets her water bill, and it's, she's in Baltimore County, and it's $30 a quarter. I pay $100 a month. So before we burden city residents, why don't we work out that we charge the six counties that receive our water and use the infrastructure that we have to fix and charge them more money for their water? Then the other two revenue streams are, a lot of residential customers are not paying their water bill. Like, just look, our governor, just look at recently, it was, his bill was $21,000 for his water bill. So there's a lot of people that can, and he could afford that water bill. So there's a lot of people that can afford those water bills, and that's in the millions. And we should work out a plan to get residents that can afford their water bill to pay it. And the other revenue stream, I think it's $56 million, are their businesses that are not paying their water bills. So we know that they have that money to pay for it. And one that, a fourth stream could be grants. There's a lot of grants out there federally that could help. So before we go raising our, Baltimore City paying $100 every month, let's look at the other counties, and let's charge them another 10 or 20 a month, and then that way, we could alleviate this burden put on our city and making people not want to come live in our city because of a water bill so high. So please look at those revenue streams before that we raise our bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bozell. Comptroller Henry?
Okay, the mayor and I will continue to alternate, adding objective information to this conversation. Wow, it's now been over a year since I spent five wonderful months of my life chairing the Regional Water Governance Task Force. And one of the things that we try to make clear to people throughout the region is that the prices that are charged in the counties are largely the result of longtime legal agreements between the city and the counties that we don't have the authority to unilaterally break. And one of the things that I was hoping would come out of that task force would be voluntary agreements between the cities and the counties to structure things in a way that they would be willing to pay more. Unfortunately, the only way that that is going to work is what they want in return for paying a fair share of the cost of the system is they want control of the system itself. And we were not able to negotiate a reasonable compromise that allows Baltimore City to maintain the measure of control that it ought to have, and in the absence of that compromise, we also were not able to get them to, and this is, you know, this is, this is just the law, they would have to voluntarily agree to pay more than the amounts that were set up when these agreements were set up literally decades ago.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing further, Mr. President. This is why I appointed the comptroller as the Chair of that commission, because I know he would be very thorough, but just, just to put a pin on it, for example, the agreement with Baltimore County is older than both I and now former County Executive Oshesky, Congressman Oshesky's union. That's how long they've been in effect, 1977, if I'm correct, Mr. Comptroller.
Yes, which I will continue to always think of as the year Star Wars came out, but if you'd like me to think of it as the year before Congressman Oshesky was born, I can also think of it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller and Mr. Mayor. All right, next, Rachel Cutler.
Good evening, Mayor Scott, Council President Cohen, and honorable members of the Baltimore City Board of Estimates. My name is Rachel Cutler. I live in Arcadia, District 3, and I am the Baltimore Director of JUFS, JUFJ, organized its more than 1,800 people in the city. JUFJ, organized its more than 1,800 people in the city to support local, social, racial, and economic justice issues. And I am submitting testimony today in opposition to the proposed water and sewage rate hike. This is not our first rodeo. We've been here for years testifying on water rate hikes. The Jewish tradition teaches us that water is life and that housing is crucial. Denying residents either is a denial of human rights. And yet, we know that, we know all across Baltimore City, residents are struggling to pay their water bills. Water rates have skyrocketed in the last decade, bills have more than doubled since 2012, and the Board of Estimates has continued to approve rate hikes over the years. These hikes have made water bills unaffordable for Baltimore's low-income residents. In fact, some Baltimore City residents are being billed up to 10% of their income. According to utilities expert Roger Colton, raising water bills to unaffordable rates is also counterproductive. If residents cannot afford their water bill, they will not pay the bill, which leaves DPW with less revenue overall. We know there are ways to address revenue that does not place the burden disproportionately on the everyday citizen. For example, as has been mentioned previously, revenue for a more equitable, revenue from a more equitable pilot agreement could be used to address our outdated water and sewer system. We look forward to continuing to participate in conversations with you all to make sure we can negotiate a transparent and more equitable pilot agreement in 2026. I urge you to oppose these water and sewer rates, sewer rate hikes, and hold our tax-exempt hospitals and universities accountable to paying their fair share as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Nika Namdi?
Good evening. I am Nika Namdi. I'm the Executive Director of the SOS Fund and the Founder and Chief Operating Officer of Fight Light BMO, where we do blight remediation that is resident-led in Baltimore City. And this evening, I want to just encourage the Board of Estimates to reject this rate hike. Bottom line is, Baltimore City residents cannot afford even a $12 rate hike. And we understand that there are issues with the infrastructure within DPW that need to be addressed, but we should not be held accountable for poor management from DPW over the last 40 years. This unfortunate, fortunately, we have gotten to this point because of a number of, a number of issues and a number of decisions. But right now, currently, we are still having billing issues within DPW. We still have residents that are having issues getting into Water for All and into the Promise Pay Program. There are challenges for residents when residents have a leak and they want to get it addressed and get an adjustment. We have contract, licensed contractors who will not work in certain neighborhoods, so people can't even have their leaks addressed appropriately. And in terms of where, other ideas for where DPW can get some of the funding from, La Siete in the Center West Building right now owes the city a half a million dollar, half a million dollars in water. Why is it they are still legally allowed to collect rent and evict residents in this city when they refuse to pay their half a million dollar water bill? And La Siete isn't the only, isn't the only commercial property owner guilty of this. There needs to be a focus on collecting the money from those who have it. Secondly, we've talked about Baltimore County, and we understand that there are issues about the legal agreement, but then that means we need to be organizing to understand when those agreements are coming due and making sure that we're on top of making them pay their fair shares we go forward. Ultimately, I do encourage you all to oppose this rate hike because simply the people of Baltimore City, by and large, cannot afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nika. Mayor Scott?
Well, Nika, I'll just, I'll make sure, between the city administrator and I, we'll make sure that you get the update, and we'll be talking about that more publicly. DPW talked about it extensively at the BOE this morning, but there's a big, has been a big effort around collection, especially from those folks that, you know, some places that never had paid a water bill, so we were making those big efforts, so we just make sure that you. And I think the comptroller was going to chime in to say that those agreements, they don't end.
Yeah.
They're in, yes.
Mr. Comptroller, do you want to jump in?
Yeah.
Name's Mayor.
And, I mean, these are, these are some particularly unfortunate ones. It feels like every couple of years, I run into, the city made a deal like decades or in some cases, centuries ago, that are now, like, maybe it looked like a good deal at the time. That's, I mean, like, that's being really kind to people who are dead. But it's definitely not a, it's definitely not a good deal now, but, you know, the law is the law, and we can't just break it because it is no longer good for us. Yeah, it's, this is, this is, this is an incredibly complex and difficult situation, and I wish, I wish there was an easy solution that we could say, let's just do this. Because, I mean, it's, like, a couple people have already said, we live here too. And like, I don't particularly enjoy going into the monthly budget for our house and increasing what we have to spend on water any more than anybody else does. But to, the, I mean, when you come, when you, when you, when you come right down to it, when you come right down to it, the idea that we should be paying for the water system in any way other than what we charge for the water system, that way gets a little dangerous. Yes, I would love to be collecting more property tax revenue, but there are all these other services that we also provide to the citizens of Baltimore that, right now, we don't collect cash directly to provide those services. We pay for those services with property taxes. And if we start saying, oh, well, why don't we spend property taxes to lower water rates? Well, what would you like us to be doing even less well than we're doing now? And that's, like, the idea of getting more property tax revenue by making the institutions that are tax exempt pay their fair share, that's a great idea. And I am 100% behind the idea of tax-exempt institutions paying more into Baltimore City. I am 100% behind that. But I am 100% behind that because I have libraries that aren't open enough. I have schools that aren't being taken care of. I have health centers throughout the city that have mold in them and where we need millions of dollars to take care of these things. And that millions of dollars, the only source of revenue we have for that is property taxes. So, I am with the idea that they need to pay their fair share, but I want you to know, I want to be very honest, there are lots of other things that that money needs to pay for. There are lots of other things that that money needs to pay for. Do we need to have a way to make sure that those among us who are most income challenged don't end up spending 10% of their household income? Yes, because I was there nine years ago when the city council held the first hearing, and we pointed out that the United Nations says that you should never have to spend more than 3% of your income to have access to fresh water. Developed countries, I'm sorry, undeveloped countries are being held to a higher global standard than Baltimore City is. But the answer to that is not, don't raise our water rates. The answer to that is to have a working Water for All program. And I strongly encourage all the advocates to continue to work with the city council on DPW to make that program actually serve the people of Baltimore the way it was intended when the advocates first came to the city council and proposed it.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. We're going to go back to Dr. Fabricant. You're up.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. Nicole Fabricant, Professor of Anthropology. I organize with the South Baltimore Community Land Trust in South Baltimore, from North Baltimore District 4. I'm going to reiterate a lot of what folks have probably said already. For many working-class families, this kind of a hike alongside BGNE hikes means that we're all paying more for basic infrastructure and city services. We should not be subsidizing this burden. So, the novel idea that's been proposed tonight is tax our wealthy anchor institutions. And I understand there are lots of needs in this city. However, we're talking about billion-dollar institutions that need to pay their fair share. If we saw that revenue, poor people wouldn't have to shoulder the burden. They wouldn't, in the same ways. This does not require the poor people of a city to cover the costs of technological innovation and development. This rate hike would affect every Baltimore resident, including so many that are just struggling to make ends meet, right? So, we are part of a coalition that's calling upon the city council, calling upon the comptroller to say, let's adequately get our anchor institutions to pay their fair share. If our tax-exempt hospitals and universities pay this fair share through pilot agreements that are transparent, we want this to be incredibly accountable and transparent to the general public, not behind closed doors. Then the revenue could go towards addressing not just the schools and neighborhoods, but also our outdated water and sewage infrastructure. These institutions utilize $47 million in city services, but they're only contributing $6 million annually. So, I urge you all, I know a lot of you agree with us, right? Zeke, as a new leader of our council, please step up around this issue. We need to hold these anchors accountable and oppose water and sewer rates. Our tax-exempt hospitals and universities can, they have the revenue, these are global institutions, let's see that revenue for the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We had one person who was going to testify online, but it does not appear that she is online. Ms. Trueheart, we hope you feel better. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify this evening? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening. My name is William Washington. I live in East Arlington in northwest Baltimore. Okay, 10 years ago, this body considered were within great, rate hikes, planned over three years. And the understanding that the public had was that this was to address the, the headwaters issue at the backwater treatment plant. Okay, well, in the reporting that has been done by the Baltimore Sun and many other media institutions, you know, there was a lot going on, well, there was a lot not going on. Equipment was allowed to fall into disrepair to the point of being wrecked. You had personnel on the grounds that were not licensed, whose license has, whose license had lapsed, who were on, who were still allowed to work. And you even had employees who's, where nobody knew where they were. They were washing cars, it was said that they were washing cars, they were doing other things that had absolutely nothing to do with what they were paid to do. So, I go back to, you know, the first real job that I had was this place called Adel Plastics, and, you know, and the owner there, when he would get to a certain mood, was he would ask, what am I paying?
Mr. Washington, going to need you to wrap it up.
Okay, sure, sure. So, what, so the question is, what are we paying you guys for? You have people who aren't licensed, equipment that has been allowed to fall into disrepair, and now here you come again with almost ruinous rate hikes. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you for your testimony. I saw there was one more individual, or two more individuals. Yes, sir.
Greetings, everybody. Sorry for the big puffy coat. It's snowing in New Orleans, and I think freak weather events, you heard about Richmond's water system made huge Maine explosions because of the cold, so I think it's coming. My name is John Kern. I'm with the SOS Fund, and we, we're kind of downhill from residents that get jammed up because of city bills. So, a lot of folks are struggling with tax sale and all of that. And the administration's been great on pulling the owner occupies out, and that's been, that's been wonderful. But just this morning, we were down in Annapolis. There's state D H C D's bill to extend city tax sale protection statewide. There's already murmurings, again, a fight we fought last year about re-including water bills back into tax sale here in the city, something we vehemently oppose. And of course, this is tangentially related to this, and it would sort of scare us. Comptroller, you said about Promise Pay. I think that's really the direction to go, Promise Pay and the Water for All program through DPW. I think it's all about eligibility. We still, you know, we have clients who are not eligible because they're in heirs properties, people filling out applications. I think there's to be a, before we can support the bill, there has to be a huge push to get as many people into those programs as possible, really, and, you know, getting community associations to help people fill out applications. They can't deal with the neighborly software, things like that. So, I feel like we're going in the right direction. We may be down the road ready, we've made a lot of steps toward these things, but really, where the rubber hits the road, there's huge underutilization. I mean, even take the homeowners' tax credit, we know, and the mayor, you've been great on this, utilization's way low, and that's something that's been around. So, we need to get, and you mentioned, you're right, you can't rob Peter to pay Paul property taxes, but if you, if their property taxes are lower, maybe they can handle a rate increase, but they're not there yet. So, if you can set a benchmark for utilizing HTC credits, then maybe we're ready for a rate hike. We just don't feel like we're there quite yet. So, empower community associations, pay folks to help with applications, get, do outreach, door knocking, enroll everybody in Water for All, then, then maybe. But until then, we can't support it at this time. Thanks so much. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. And leave you, one more gentleman. All right.
Good evening, Council. Jacob Castro from District 5. Jacob Castro from District 5, Glenn. I don't think you should vote, you should vote yes on this bill because the people of Baltimore don't have enough information. There's no third-party information on, there's no third-party information on the, on the exacts of if this bill should be regulate between, between all of the people. You have put the bill together to make it a zero-sum game, and it's not a zero-sum, it's not a zero-sum issue. It's either we, either the federal government makes us pay for these, for these increases or the people have to pay for the increases. And it's like a double slap in the face for most people in Baltimore. It's like you're going from $12 one year to $14 increase in one year, and then you go up to 17 as the years go by. When we ran the numbers and we went to the water means, and we ran the numbers, we saw that one to, less than 2% of people were on these Promise Pay and these water programs. And so, the argument of the bill was that 98% of Baltimore can pay for this. And I think that's a fallacy. I don't think 98% of people should have to pay for this. But then you also have, you're also in a tough situation because we're talking about our nest eggs here. John Hopkins, University of Maryland, we make $12 billion a year. So, how can we ask them for the pay more when they legally don't have to pay more? So, it's, 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 it's a conundrum that you're putting as well. But I think you should vote no based on the fact that the people of this city have no third-party information on, on the bill, on, on what, on what it's going to do to our city overall and what has been done with the money that we've given you throughout the years. The people don't know. So, I think you should vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any additional testimony this evening? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to ask the Department of Public Works to come on back up. Is Mr. Garbark? Great. Questions from my colleagues? I have several, but comptroller? In, Mr. Garbark, first off, thank you for coming back. In reviewing the numbers from fiscal year '23 to '24, it appears operating costs increased significantly. How much of this was due to staff? How much of this was due to staff augmentation in order to maintain compliance with the consent decree?
Thank you for that, Mr. President. Staff augmentation was a piece of it. The vast majority, though, was overall operations for the plant. We had our material costs go up, our equipment costs go up, chemical costs. Staff augmentation was a piece of that. I'm going to ask Aaron Moore, do you want to speak more to that? He's our chief financial officer. That was a piece to the overall issue, but was not the full issue.
Good evening. Aaron Moore, CFO, DPW. As Matt mentioned, that's correct. A portion of it was staff augmentation, but a large portion of that was the major investments that we were making into Back River for the facility's consent decree. So pumps, motors, all the materials and supplies that go along with that drastically increased costs so that we could get the plants up to peak operating condition.
Can you talk to me, either Mr. Moore or Mr. Garbark, about the amount of money spent on contractors? You know, we talked in the past about the need for the department to be sort of doing its own work as it relates to wastewater treatment facilities, and we had a really robust discussion maybe a week or two ago about the amount of contracting that we're doing in some of these facilities and the need to home-grow our own workforce. I also know that contracting tends to be extremely expensive and much more so than just paying our own folks. So could you talk about how that layers into cost increases?
Yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on that briefly. Aaron can add if I, if I misstate anything or, or don't cover anything. But you're absolutely right. Paying contractors is more expensive. One of the issues, and it was mentioned, is about certification and other issues with that. We need to get our employees, we need to build the certifications for our employees. These are not something that we can do overnight. It takes two, three years sometimes to get these certifications. The only way to get immediate compliance, which is what was required, was to bring in outside, third-party help. That is not something that we want, want to use for the long term. We want to use that just right now where we achieve, as, as, as Mr. Moore said, full compliance with the permits. We want to be able to use that and then build our own in-house team, make that much larger, and not have to rely on those contractors.
Before going to the mayor, real quick, just on that point, can you give a breakdown to the board just about how much are we spending on the contractor piece, or kind of what the, what the labor breakdown looks like?
For, you would know more than I would.
I can't recall all of them offhand. However, we do have a contract with Jacobs, which is $5 million per year. And then there's another one with Prostart for another $2 million per year. And I believe we had some consultants on board as well, too. Don't remember the cost, but I think that's Hazen and Sawyer as well, too.
Two for Hazen, eight for Prostart.
Steve, do you want to come?
Mr. Sharkey?
Steve Sharkey, Bureau of Water and Wastewater. $2 million for Hazen, $8 million for Prostart.
Thank you.
Steve, you might as well stay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just a follow-up on that, and it goes back to what you said, Mr. President, and stuff that was talked about earlier with, with the certification. So we know, I mean, Matt, you know this better than anybody, this is something that we discussed, I mean, shortly after I got into office. Can you talk about how those years of disinvestment and not having the folks certified have negatively impacted the system, in particular, the wastewater system? And then I'll, I'll come back.
Absolutely. So a lot of our employees at the Back River and Patapsco wastewater treatment plants have been there a long time. A lot of folks, back 30, 40 years ago, there was still a lot of industry in south and east Baltimore and Baltimore County. This was a natural progression for folks when plants closed, when there were other changes. People went into these plants, and a lot of the, the operations that were learned instrumentation were on-the-job training. We move forward, fast forward, there's been a lot of advances in the technology, in the systems, in the control panels, all of that stuff. And there's now certifications in place. These certifications are required for certain operations of the plant. Now, a lot of our folks were grandfathered in. They worked before that was ever required. They were able to demonstrate proficiency with that. That continued. However, we have now reached a point where we don't have enough actually certified operators to run a lot of these, this equipment, these positions. This actually is, state and federal requirements require that you have certified, there's certified folks who actually run this. This put a huge strain because we don't actually have that. We had to go to the contracting community to achieve that. This has forced compression in our salaries, which has also meant that we can't promote folks as fast or as far as we want them because there's now a certification requirement to get to some of those higher levels.
And thank you for that, Mr. Garbark. And just a follow-up, we talked, we talked about Heat Works a little bit today, and I just want you guys to talk about the investment that went there, but also the output at the, at the water treatment facilities over the past few years, and what, what has happened after that significant investment?
Yes, sir. The Headworks facility was one of the largest, in fact, it was the largest project since the wastewater system went into existence. It was a $450 million investment for all of the flow that came into the plant. It addressed a couple of different things. The, we found that the design back in the system was flawed 100 years ago. They thought it was at a particular pitch, it was at a much more narrow pitch. That meant that there were sewer backups.
Back up for a second.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Explain to the common folks what pitch is, for me, how that impacts someone, the impacts the system.
Yes, sir. So the pitch of, the angle of the pipe, the flow of the pipe allows for wastewater to drain at a certain speed. So in your houses, plumbing has to be at a certain rise over run for it to flow properly. We found that this pipe was not actually at the designed angle, that it was, there were bows in it, that it had sort of drifted in, in spots. This created what was called a, this was a backup. Basically, it created backups that flowed all the way, eight miles back into the city. Whenever it rained or there were storms, cracks in the pipe system would get into this. It would cause backups, which would cause sewer overflows. This process, by opening Headworks, allowed for all of that flow to come into the plant much more quickly, and eliminated close to 80% of all sanitary sewer overflows. That is the stuff coming into the plant. That stuff has been addressed, we're able to, to deal with that much more quickly. The work that's been undergoing the last two years to improve all of the systems and the equipment, that is the stuff that's the effluent that's going out into Back River and to Patapsco. The improvements we've made, we are now seeing effluent levels at the highest quality in the existence of the plants. So we are putting the cleanest water back into the water system, into our rivers, that the plants have ever seen in their existence.
And this is my, my last question, Mr. President. Can you, as briefly as possible?
Yes, sir.
For the folks in the room, answer the same line of question as you did earlier about collections and those things, for, as you did for the council president this morning?
Yes, sir. We have stood up a collections unit. The focus of that unit is, the start was on commercial collections. It is a unit comprised of DPW staff, finance department staff, law department staff. We have gone after the largest offenders on the commercial side. To date, in less than a year, we've collected $56 million. We've used a number of tools to do that, aggressive letter-writing campaigns, contacts that have been made, as well as legal actions to achieve that.
Pick up on my earlier line of questioning and then go back to the collections piece. One of the mayor and my shared priorities is around home-growing our talent and supporting our young people in this city to be part of that future workforce and to get those certifications that you mentioned, and to earn the good, family-sustaining wages that comes with these types of jobs. And yet, we're now in this space due to past disinvestment where we are not only not supporting the next generation, but we're actually bringing in contractors, which is more expensive, ultimately, for the taxpayer and for the ratepayer. And again, we're not pouring it back into our own workforce. So just talk to us about what DPW is doing to train that next generation and replenish the workforce so that we're not in a situation in a few years from now where we're continuing to contract out significant portions of work that I would argue should be done in-house.
Yes, thank, thank you very much. That's something we've been very proud of. We have been very active in looking to develop our own talent. It is a lot easier to train folks who are already aware of how things work, how the city works, how we work, than to start from scratch. So we've been really investing in training programs with our local community colleges, as well as other entities. We pay fully for our employees to get certified. We encourage them to take the test, we encourage them to go to training, we'll pay for the training. We've developed a large percentage of, of training that, that does that. We've also looked at developing apprenticeship programs so that people who are entering the workforce work along someone who is a lot more knowledgeable. They can then take over as there's openings in that. We've also looked at, as you mentioned, our talent and getting folks at a, at a much younger age, working with the school system, as well as our local universities. We have some terrific civil and environmental engineering programs in the city. We partnered with Morgan State, Coppin State, others, to look at developing that talent, to bring in engineers and others, to really bring them in and to, to try to develop that, that talent. And also looking at bringing in folks from the high school level who are looking for entry-level jobs to get that training.
Thank you. Mayor Scott?
And Matt, I know that we, oh, the director can go first. He hasn't spoken today.
I'm so sorry.
All right. Matt, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the water wastewater staff in particular, we also gave like a $15 million raise, which was the first time they've had one in, in decades.
That's absolutely correct. Yes, I should have mentioned that. Thank you, sir. We increased their wages by $15 million, which was the first time in, in, as far as any of us can recall, that it was actually increased. So we are paying our workers much higher than they had been paid a couple of years prior.
Understood. Director Zaid?
Yeah, just, the mayor and I, we had multiple conversations about involving a lot of the high schools around the area as well, and, and, and to start with Merivo as well. You and I, we had a conversation, Mr. President, about Community College of Baltimore City, which is, we have a meeting with them scheduled already in, in the next couple of weeks. So we're involving a lot of people. I mean, we met with a lot of the young folks that we have throughout the programs. And you could talk a little bit, Matt, about the specific programs that we do, and, and how these programs are developed, and the top of leadership we're getting out of this is that we have now, right now, kids that can really pass the exam coming out, just really after the initial training that we have. They take the exam, but they needed to wait for the certification for three years. But they already have done it, and they took the exam, they have the technologies, and they passed the course right away.
Thank you, Director Zaid. Mr. Moore, do you want to add anything?
Now, I don't run youth programs, but I did help develop their budgets.
If you could speak a little bit louder.
You got it. So I don't run youth programs, but I did help develop their budgets. So we do have the Be More Wise program, which the director is referring to. It's a cohort-based program that brings in-classroom instruction, as well as hands-on apprenticeship-type training as well, too. The second one is the YH2O program, which is also another cohort-based program. These programs are taking in 30 or so students at a time, and going through these classes to get them into long-term positions. The YH2O program got a $330,000 grant from the EPA, and it's fully paid for. In addition to that, the BH, the Be More Wise program also got, I believe, we partnered with WSSC, and has a $1 million grant over the next couple of years to pay for that as well, too.
Appreciate that. Suffice it to say, I think it is critically important that we invest in our people in the same way that we're investing in our infrastructure. And to be in a situation where we are having to contract out large sums that ultimately fall on the backs of taxpayers, instead of promoting our own young people, is really a shameful position to be in. I am deeply appreciative that this administration has made this and will continue to make this a priority. Again, I do not want to be sitting here in one year, two years, three years, or four years from now with us continuing to spend exorbitant amounts on contracting. I'm going to recognize the city administrator before shifting my line of questions.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. President. So I just wanted to offer some additional insight, and to just be very clear with our residents at home about where we are, especially in relation to leveraging contractor resources. A thing that this administration will not compromise on is compliance, and we are not going to compromise on quality. And so what that means is that there is not an option when it comes to ensuring that we have qualified staff that are running our plants. It was a part of the reason that we are in a consent decree. And so we have to do our due diligence to ensure that we are operating our plants in a way that is, in a way that is compliant, but that we are also doing it in a way that, of course, shoulders as much of the burden off of our taxpayers as possible. But again, this is a part of the mandates within our consent decree. So I just want to be clear with folks about the requirements around the consent decree.
No, I fully appreciate that, and clearly there is a need to remain in compliance, honor our consent decree obligations, and invest in our own people and build a workforce within the agency that is reflective of Baltimore. Just to shift back to what the mayor had mentioned, and sort of the earlier line of questioning from today, it was explained earlier and in some correspondence with my staff that the collection rate remains below the industry, average industry standard, and that deficiencies in collections have accumulated over several years. And you mentioned a significant increase in the last year, I think you said 56 million, that you all have been able to collect, and that is deeply appreciated. But I believe the total receivables that have not been collected, the estimate was 188 million. Is that about right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do, we have an analysis of what collecting those accounts at the average industry standard for double-rated utility would do to reduce the proposed rate increase. Like, were we collecting that money?
So I think it's, what, there are three different funds, three different funds. So wastewater, water, and storm water. So the wastewater is 100 million, the water is 70 million, and storm water is like 10 million, somewhere in that range. So the issue is, this has accumulated over time. I mean, this is, this is in our official records, it's in the ACFA, which is on the Department of Finance website, but it's over many, many, many years. But what we have been looking at, so no one year is really going to change our rate increase, if that makes sense, because that money was in the past and it's been building up over a long time. We are not far from an industry standard, but we don't have all the tools, you know, as we discussed earlier, to collect in that way, like tax sale.
So I think, I'm just going to speak for myself, I don't want to speak for other members of the board, but, you know, would not support tax sale as a tool to recoup funds when folks are delinquent on a water bill. It seems to, would cause more harm and financial stress ultimately than it would solve. But can you talk about what tools are available? Because clearly you've been able to recoup, you said 56 million.
Yes, sir.
So what are the tools in the tool belt, and how are we aggressively utilizing them to go after both commercial and certainly multifamily residential to recoup folks who have not paid their share? Mr. Comptroller?
Keeping in mind that tax sale can be used on commercial accounts. So, yes. So there's a couple of different things. There's disincentives, incentives. There's disincentives, incentives, and sort of they increase with severity. The far end would essentially be shut off, that we are permitted under city law and state law to shut off people's water if they don't pay. That is something that we want to avoid because obviously, we know people are using it and it's absolutely necessary for people to live. Dialing back a little bit, there is traditionally been the tax sale option. That is also a very harsh action. It can be very draconian. In the past, we admit, and this is why owner-occupied residential properties were taken out, there were mistakes, and people paid dearly for that. We admit that, and it's the right thing to do to take them out. We fully agree with that. On the commercial side of the house, that is a different option. That can still be permitted, and tax sale can be very effective to get people to comply. We've been working with the Finance Department to make sure that that does occur on our commercial side of the house, that if we cannot get compliance, if we can't get a payment method or payment program, that we will look into the tax sale option. We also have the legal ability to recover what is owed to us. Now, when it comes to a large amount, half a million, multiple millions of dollars, we actually have put court cases together, legal action, taken them to court and gotten a court order to pay what is owed to us. That works great when it's a large amount of money because it makes financial sense. When you're talking about smaller entities, that's when the costs really do add up. That brings us down to what we've really been focusing on with our internal collections team, which is the contact, the letters, the phone calls, the finding who's the right person to pay the bill, making sure that someone who, oh, that's not me, that's this person, we're going to follow up, we're going to go out there, we're going to find them, and having literally relentless follow-up to find out who's responsible for these bills and to finally get them, get them to pay. On the incentive side of the house, we understand that it can be easily, if you get a leak, if you get something, the water bills can spike. We have partnered with an entity called Promise Pay, as was mentioned, where individuals can get into interest-free, flexible payment plans so that they can get out of that debt and that burden. We push that as much as we can when folks have trouble with water debt. The other thing is Water For All. And we, that brings individuals' bills to a very manageable level by giving a direct credit. It's income-based, and it's based on what your income is, is what the credit is, and it comes right off of your bill. So we push people to apply for that, and it is a application that is granted if you comply with it or if you meet that threshold.
Commissioner Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there was some confusion earlier between Promise Pay and Water For All. What percentage, do we have numbers on the percentage of people participating in Water For All?
12,000 households.
12,000 households just in Baltimore City?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's more than 2%.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Administrator?
Yep, just, I wanted to offer a few additional things. So there's Water For All, Promise Pay does not have income requirements, correct? It's just being able to pay over time. Water For All does have income requirements. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, who is outside, they have a table outside and can answer any questions around Water For All and any of the eligibility questions that you might have can be answered today. Also, the Department of Social Services, so state DSS, also has funding that's available for water bill assistance. So whenever we have a resident that we can't, for whatever reason, they don't meet our minimum requirements, oftentimes, we refer them to DSS, and DSS has a different program with more flexible requirements as well. And so there are multiple avenues that when a resident presents with challenges, that we are able to refer them to. And then also, during the pandemic, the state gave us about $15 million, if I'm not mistaken, for water bill assistance that we put out as well to the general public. So there's, there's quite a bit of assistance that's available, and I'm happy and open to get feedback this time or another time about ways that we can enhance and improve Water For All and, you know, if we need to look at potentially expanding eligibility for some of the unique situations that come up. I think we're open to that.
Thank you, Madam City Administrator, and thanks, thanks for.
I was like, you're sitting there, we could do that. I'm like, yes, we could do that. I was like, oh, you're talking to Khalil. Okay, all right.
Thank you, City Administrator, and thanks for Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and the other resources that are available tonight. When do you anticipate being at industry standard in terms of collection?
That's a very good question. We would want, our desire is to be there and right now. As soon as we can and as soon as we can put together some of these tools, we will, we will use them. We will go after people who owe us those water bills. The issue is, you know, coordinating that and doing it in a way that is effective but not disruptive or harmful. And that's where I think some of the issues are still out. Okay, and I think that's where we're still looking through what those tools actually are. We know what we can do with commercial right now. That's what we're tackling. We are focusing on, the 56 million is about 42% of the commercial outstanding bills. We're going after the remaining amount now. That's going to be more difficult, but the same tactics can be used. The tougher nut to crack is going to be the residential accounts because we have to figure out, there are people who can pay and aren't, and those who truly are struggling and need that assistance, and figuring out a way that isn't as draconian or as harmful as tax sale, but is still effective in getting those, those water bills paid is something that we're going to have to really work on to figure out a solution.
Director Zaid, and then Comptroller Henry?
Just wanted to mention something about, as we talk about industry standards, we talk about a private sector involved as well. And with the private sector coming from central Illinois, doing a similar job over there in which the American Water was the provider of water in there, they raised the rate 19% and they came the next year to raise it by another 39% and was, you know, just, I'm not sure if that's what they ended up with, but that's what the next year was. And looking at it at the time and discussing it, as the Director of Public Works, talking to them at the time, it is, their policy was three weeks and we'll cut it off. And that is it. And that's how they get to some of those standards that they need to deal with. We can't and we won't do that type of, of a policy. So it is, as we talk about a policy, in many ways, reaching that 98%, it is probably will require incredible amount of work, including change in policy that we're not ready to do as well.
No, I understand, and again, I said this earlier, do appreciate the humane, balanced approach that you are seeking to take. And at the same time, it is obviously concerning as a fiscal steward for the folks' water utility, that we still have these unpaid bills and particularly on the commercial side. But again, appreciate the work to collect, you know, it just, when we're asking our taxpayers to raise their water bills, it's difficult to not be there. Comptroller Henry?
So there are probably plenty of other cities across the country that struggle with this problem. Other than tax sale or shutting off water, what do, what do other people do?
So most other places, like with credit cards, other places have collections entities that are rather aggressive.
I'm going to pause you there. Do you have a feel for whether, across the country, more people do that in-house or contract out?
I would probably defer to the director, but my understanding is that major, a lot of it is contracted out because you, that is that fee model. You pay for what is collected. The concern we had in, when we talked about this a couple of years ago, is the potential for it to go after certain individuals just looking at money and not taking into account someone may have a need or a debt that has skyrocketed their bill and they can't pay it, but we now have a company that's threatening credit scores and going after them aggressively. That was the concern that we have because other entities, it is aggressive in terms of collections units.
The reason I wanted to confirm that is, one of the things I remember from several years ago when we were pushing to create the Water For All program, I'm blanking on his name, but there's an academic from Northeast. Someone may have actually quoted him in their testimony tonight because he, what? He was the one who had research showing that if you lowered what people had to pay down to what they could pay, your, your total collections would actually increase. And I remember having a conversation with DPW staff at the time, and the reason that wasn't being taken by DPW at the time as, as solid evidence of why we should do this was because he was basing his research on places that did not have tax sale as an option. And so when they calculated their total collections, they were including how much they were effectively paying their private collections firms in order to collect money from people. And therefore, if you factor that in as a legit cost of doing business, Water For All actually works. But for DPW at the time, their attitude was, we're not paying anybody a collections fee because tax sale is free for us.
Correct.
So it doesn't actually, like, this is not proof that we're going to actually make more money if we do that. But it feels like now we're there, and it feels like now a truly effective, and by truly effective, this is where I'm going to say, even 12,000 people in Water For All is only about 6% of the households in Baltimore, and it's probably not everybody who needs to be in Water For All. So I'm really looking forward to the city administrator and the director of DPW working out a way to make that work the way it's supposed to. Because if we can get all the people who need that level of protection into that kind of program, then we can focus on what should the normal customer rate be for providing a working and well-maintained water sewer and stormwater system. The only thing that I think the people in this room are going to be unhappy about is, I don't think we can wait until that happens to keep fixing the system. And that's, I think, what this is going to boil down to today. So, thank you.
Administrator Leach?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Comptroller Henry, for your words there. A thing that I want to point out about, your points about Water For All, and just to also be clear about the utility system itself, because there was a lot of dialogue about different revenue sources and revenue streams. The utility is self-sustaining. It is independent. That means that the revenues of the system have to be able to run and maintain the system. So we can't pull money from other sources into the system to stabilize the system, right? So it has to be maintained by the rate payers. Now, the point about Water For All that I can appreciate about this dialogue is Water For All is a way for us, it is one of the very few ways that we can infuse some resources into the system, because I can't just go and take money from the general fund and put it into the water utility. But if there were more money and more people using Water For All, that could be an additional way to bring some additional, I mean, slightly more, but just to get to your point about increasing the number of participants in Water For All to the rate of the, you know, the number of folks that we know are in need of that additional assistance. So I think that there is some value to that conversation around Water For All. Now, a question that I have, which I do think was already asked earlier, but I want to ask it again, with, oh, yes.
Could I, just, just for the folks at home, could you just explain, since we've mentioned it repeatedly throughout tonight, could you just explain the Water For All program, just so that everyone's on the same page?
Sure. And Dr. Brooks is here and can, can do a little bit of explanation. It's been a while.
Apologies for cutting you off.
No worries.
I just wanted to clarify for the.
No worries. So I think this was about two years ago, the city council passed legislation called Water For All, and it was due in large part to the people in this room and others who are not here to ensure that we were providing equitable access to water. And so what we do through the Mayor's Office of Children and Success, Children and Family Success in partnership with the Department of Public Works, is based on some very specific requirements, which Dr. Brooks is going to read out, because I forget them off the top of my head. We provide a subsidy to individuals' water bills who qualify, but Dr. Brooks, you can go into the specifics that I may not have.
So, good evening, Dr. Brooks, Executive Director, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. And I'm going to have Penny Lewis, who's actually the manager of Water For All, who's going to stand with me because she is the expert and I don't want to say anything incorrect. But I do want to say that in partnership, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success in partnership with DPW has approved, I want to say in 2024, over 5,000 families for Water For All. We continue to, to get the message out. I also wanted to say, in partnership with MOKA, I've been working very closely with Director Singletary, to be able to go out to the community associations, also in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Older Adults, to go out so that they can understand the process for Water For All, to get additional support around Water For All. We have five CAP centers, but we also know that to reduce barriers, we're also taking the information out into the communities. So we work very closely with our school community coordinators. We go out during family engagement nights in our schools so that families are aware of Water For All, and we actually take applications on the spot at those family community engagement evenings at our schools. We also, as I said, go to the community association meetings because I am in partnership with Director Singletary with the community associations, as well as working very closely with our older adult offices. So we are really intentionally going out into the community to give them more information about Water For All and actually taking applications on the spots and working with our families. So I wanted to share that as well. And Ms. Lewis, introduce yourself.
My name is Penny Lewis, and I've been working with the Water For All program now for 15 months. Very excited about the work that we've done prior to me coming and then, of course, building on that, working very closely with Department of Public Works and WACA, Water Advocacy Group. A lot of my peers are here. But we've done a lot of work this past year and a half, and I'm, one of the things that I'm really proud about is the mass enrollment that we're doing with HABC to help get that money down. And so it's all coming together with the new system, and we, I think it was 5,225 people that we served in 2024. That was a lift of over 1,600 from the year previously, and so far, for 20 days in January, we've assisted 313 families.
And if you could just say what the requirements are?
The requirements are that we get your ID, your 30-day income, and your water bill. And if you're a tenant, we need your full lease. If you're on a master meter, then we need the ledger. And our goal is to get everybody done within 90 days. Right now, we're, we're getting everything done within 30 days. We've got five locations and we're very much hands-on.
Madam Administrator, and again, apologies for cutting you off. I just, the term was being thrown around a bunch, and I just want to make sure everyone both, I think most folks in this room understand Water For All, but folks at home may not. So appreciate both the work you're doing and the explanation as well.
Yep, yeah, no, I appreciate you for pausing me because I think it's important that we use this time to explain a critical program to our residents. So can you talk a little bit about the federal income guidelines and where folks fall on the poverty spectrum in order to qualify for Water For All? And then, isn't it calculated, like a percentage of your annual income? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. It's 200% below the federal poverty level. It's 200% below the federal poverty level. And the formula is that we take your household income, the household count and the water sewer usage, and it formulates the one-time credit. And you're able to apply once on a rolling calendar year. So if you applied April 2024, you can reapply April 2025.
Thank you. Madam Administrator, any other? Sorry. All right. Mr. Comptroller?
If we could have Penny give lessons to other city employees on how to speak clearly and concisely and loudly at the microphone, that would be, that's from Cable 25.
Oh, thank you very much. See, I'm not shy. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Director. Thank you, Penny. Mr. Garbar, I'm going to ask a question that I asked, but maybe not well previously. I just wanted to sort of clarify, getting back to the collections piece. If we were at that 98% standard, and Mr. Moore had spoken about it's sort of hard to calculate because it's multiple years of not collecting the full amount of water bills. And so it's a little tough to sort of factor. But I think the thing that I am struggling with on the question before us tonight is how much should have been collected that could offset some of what we're being asked to vote on this evening? And so specifically, if you could say both the percents, you mentioned earlier, I think it was 96% is the industry standards. We're at 92%. If you could say which which part of that is commercial, which part is residential? And then if you could, again, I'm not sure if I'm asking this as well as I could, but just trying to understand if we were collecting at close to that industry standard, how much would that have recouped to be able to offset, you know, the the increase that we're facing tonight?
Right. So for outstanding bills, delinquent water bills, we have about an 85-15 split.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
If we include all, if we include all categories, it's probably around that 80-20 realm. 80 is residential, 20 is commercial.
For outstanding. But when you look at the the dollar amount, it's the exact opposite. 80% is commercial, 20% is residential. So it's sort of this this reverse 80-20 type of principle. In terms of the delinquent accounts, that is a very tough question that I I'm afraid I don't have an answer to because of all of the costs that have come just in the last two years. As as Mr. Moore said, this has been accumulating. If if this had been different when all of these additional costs had come along, I don't know how that would have affected where we are now in terms of these rate increases. But what's really driving this are just the additional costs and requirements of the last couple of years, which has put a much larger immediate strain on the utilities right now that we have to come up, come up with this money. So I I know that that's not the answer. That's not an answer. I don't know what that would be if we had done that because it does go back so many years. But what we're facing now is is more of an immediate response to to issues that came up last year or the year before.
Understood. So we do not have the data to be able to definitively say or even sort of a ballpark around where we would be if we were recouping at industry standard. City Administrator?
Thank you so much for that, Council President. That was actually, I was going to ask that question, but in a different way. But so the question that I was going to ask Matt was, well, there were two questions. One, and this is probably for Aaron, bad debt. So generally, like, we are never going to be able to collect 100%. There's no, very few services across the city where we're able to collect at 100% rate of 100%, right? So there's always that margin for error. And there's also the debt, the bad debt that we write off. So can you talk a little bit about what we generally or on average we see in the bad debt that we would just write off when it comes to our water utility?
Yeah, absolutely. There's kind of a.
Help me understand, too, the concept of bad debt.
Basically, anything that we deem uncollectible in accounting, let's speak. So generally, I would say, I would describe it like this. We do kind of a discount, if you will, in our model for what we, you know, our collection rate, kind of, if you will, which is kind of built in. And then we also build in a line of what we expect, which we may or may, which we may not collect. There's a calculation for that. In fact, we actually do that calculation monthly and we do it at the end of the year, total it up. That's how we arrive to what we have remaining left over outstanding, if you will. So there's a portion of the debt written off every month. And sometimes it actually goes in reverse. So with the collections program, we're actually technically above 100% collection because we collected more than we billed because we're collecting so much more from the past. And so sometimes the allowance for bad debt actually reverses and we actually get to put money back in.
Understood. Madam Administrator?
And then the second way to try to get a roundabout answer to your question is when, prior to the city moving to the policy where we no longer leverage tax sale as an option, you mentioned earlier that we would see an influx of payment. Do you have any idea around, you know, an amount or the amount of people or any any percentages that you can talk about that we used to? When was that, that where we changed that policy? Was that in 2019?
That was 17, 2018. I don't think any of us were there then. But I can say that we would see from from others who were around is is a significant uptick. We were not looking at more than $40 million, $50 million outstanding debt each year when we were doing that. So that was something, and now, again, it was a very different time, but it was extraordinarily effective tool. It was a very destructive tool as well, but it was extremely effective.
And similarly, can you talk about forced shut offs? So during the pandemic, was, is that when we stopped the forced shut offs? Do you, do we, do we have any idea about the the collection rate at the point of a forced shut off?
It really does depend on what is is causing that delinquency. If someone is unable to pay or it is a vacant structure, we won't see any collection. Many of the vacant structures are what Mr. Moore was talking about with the bad debt. You know, there are houses in this city where the water bill is is more than the value of the home. We're never getting that money back.
Mr. Com, sorry, Mr. Comptroller?
I will take this opportunity to repeat an often mentioned point, which is if we took the meters out of houses when they were declared vacant, then they wouldn't run, continue to run up water bills.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right.
Point taken, sir.
Point taken.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller.
Point taken. Yes, sir.
As you were, Mr. Garbar.
I was asking about where the collection, were we able to, at the point of forced shut off, did we see, you know, a large volume of people that were paying?
It depend, yeah, it largely depended on the circumstances. What we were able to do is we were able to protect ourselves from not running any more debt up into that. It did clearly get compliance on occasion, just like, you know, there's stories of people, their telephone gets shut off, their power gets shut off. They get the bill in the in the in the in the mail the next day. But I don't really have that data. It's been a lot longer than COVID since we've done shut offs. It has been a tremendously long time since since we've we've actively done that, going back a decade at least, if not more. We have tried to avoid that at all costs.
If we were to bring on a collections firm, right now, the liquid water bills do not show up as a part of someone's credit, like on their credit report.
No, sir. No, ma'am.
If, does that change if we bring on credit, if we bring on a collections?
That was part of the concern when this was explored. One of the things we liked about Promise Pay is that they don't run credit reports. There is no credit action on there. One of the tools that collections entities use is the credit, which, again, is can be very destructive. And and that was a concern is how we safeguarded that. You know, having an entity like that go after those who could and wouldn't pay, but not having a go after someone who's already overburdened and and that would only further harm them.
Mr. Comptroller?
I know we don't have to completely micromanage this particular aspect of collections now. But I will point out that what is frequently speculated is that a big chunk of our residential collections problem is rental properties where the landlord isn't paying us because the bill is in the name of the the building. Okay? Whether or not tenants are paying the landlord. And I will, I'll take this opportunity to also say, if everybody who needed to be protected from the destructive impact of credit ramifications was in a Water For All program, you could use the threat of being, you know, having it be on your credit as a way to get people who aren't paying, who own residential properties and who could pay, but just aren't right now because right now they recognize that we're kind of toothless when it comes to making them pay.
Yes, sir.
What I don't know is, is there any reason we can't use the threat of credit reports when we're doing it in-house like we are now? That doesn't have to be an outside firm to do that.
Correct.
We could decide we're going to, when we feel it's appropriate, threaten people with sending something to the credit report agency, sorry.
That wouldn't be something we would decide our own. That would also involve the Department of Finance because.
I'm sorry, we, the city.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I.
We would, oh, yeah, to that point. So we.
Madam Administrator?
Oh, I'm sorry. But to the point of the Comptroller is making, yeah, it would be in partnership with the Department of Finance. And, I mean, you know, to the large, the earlier point about even the contractor piece of this, like, if we were to keep it in-house, I mean, we would need to build capacity because I'm not sure that the Finance Department currently has a function where they are working with the credit reporting or the credit bureau, so we would have to build some capacity. But I do, to answer your question, I do think if we decided as a policy that's that's what we wanted to do, it would likely be cheaper if we did it in-house and we would, could build some capacity to do it. So that is a policy discussion.
Mr. Comptroller?
Nope. I I agree with her 100%.
Okay.
And I'll sign that.
Just to sort of wrap on this line of questioning about collections and, you know, how much it would be offset, just again, one more time, no way of predict, I understand, no way of going back multiple years, just in this timeframe, like 2024, 2025, even one year. Do we know if we were at the 98% versus the 94%? I think you had said that we're at currently, how much that delta would be?
Yeah, it it is, that's very difficult to say. We don't have that analysis because when we look at the 94 and 98, we're looking at the number of rate payers and their accounts. That's just the number of of who pays on time, not the amount of of the bill that's outstanding. So if we go to 98%, you know, one of the issues is, you know, who are in that delta? Is it, is it, is it large users of the system or small users? It's really difficult to say without doing a lot of extensive analysis. I don't have that information.
Understood. City Administrator made a point. Could you just, to sort of back into this a different way, the, you said 56 million that you all did collect recently. What percent or what, how did that play into, you know, was that a substantial? Could you talk about that?
Yeah, I'll let the finance.
I can't recall the numbers exactly, but yeah, 56 million, which was from a particular subset of accounts from a list where they owed us over, you know, $1 million, that that type of account. So it was significant. There's probably another 40 outstanding. But, you know, as you get down the line, the accounts get smaller and smaller and smaller. And that's when you start looking at the toolbox differently as we talked about, when do you do litigation? When do you do, you know, letters, et cetera? And that's why we have our customer engagement unit, collections, if you will, for those folks as well, too. So basically, as we move from the lawyers internally, in-house, to our collections people engaging, still large accounts, but a lot more work to do.
I'd like to add.
Director Zaid and then City Minister.
So we have collected roughly $56.5 million on on those accounts. Those $56.5 million represent roughly 46, 46 accounts. 46 accounts. So that $56 million also represents 42% of the total amount on the commercial value that needed to be collected. So roughly, we have another 40 of the commercial piece. So we roughly have now another, let's say, 48%, 45% left in the commercial piece. But the 45% that is left is a lot of multiple accounts. So it's a huge number of accounts. And while we're trying to dig into these accounts and get into them one by one, because of the large number, it's going to require a much longer period of time and an extensive work. But the work that has been done thus far to get to the point where we did is incredible, and we're going to continue on doing so.
You can go first. He can go first.
Comptroller Henry?
I want to practice my algebra. If I, basic, based on what you have said and what you have said, I think the amount that you've collected from commercial exceeds the amount of uncollected residential that remains.
I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Okay, okay. So here, well, here's what you said. You said the total uncollected is about 180.
88, I think.
188 million. Okay, 188 million and 133 million is commercial?
Roughly, I'll give you now. I'll work out the numbers while we do.
Okay. It's just, okay, as as you've been going along, I've been trying to keep track and fill in the missing numbers. And it sounds like if you've collected 56 million and there was only 133 of commercial and there's only 188 total, then the residential is 55 million.
But is the 56, sorry. But is the.
Madam Administrator?
The, is the fix, is the 56 million accounted for in the 188? Or is it 188 after the 56 million?
Oh, that's a good question.
Meaning, so you said, the question on the floor is, how much do we have in outstanding water bills? We said 188 million. We've collected, we've collected 56. Is that 188 represented, does it include the 56?
188 is the official number at the end of FY '23. So 188 was before.
So it does include it.
Okay. So if we had 188 and we collected 56, then we have 132 remaining.
That, that also is looking at the monthly payments. You know, who pays, who doesn't pay per year. What Mr. Moore was talking about is at the end of fiscal year '23. That's the last audited financial statement that we have. So we have those estimates for fiscal year '24. You are correct. We, that 56 would be in the realm of what we're looking at for residential.
Okay. So, but, and this was sort of going back to your point that what was uncollected was far more uncollected commercial than residential. But that last 50-something million of residential is going to be harder to collect because you have fewer tools right now.
Absolutely correct. Absolutely. Yes.
And in the course of the way you have collections set up, are you triaging and identifying the people who, when you're reaching out to them, you have money, you just haven't paid it versus you didn't pay it because you didn't have it? And so we're trying to shunt you into some combination of Water For All and Promise Pay?
So what we're looking at now first is the commercial accounts. So what we're looking at now first is the commercial accounts. They would not be in Water for All.
Sure, yeah, right. Oh, you're not, you're not at residential yet.
We are not at residential, no, sir.
Okay, I withdraw the question. Okay.
I have some, some numbers if you want to...
Sure.
Mr. President? Yeah. So we have the number of account, total account, this is a commercial account, 329 accounts. Under investigation, we have 282 accounts. Number of accounts resolved, I said 46, they're 47. Amount collected to date is 56 million, 56.5. Current amount due to active account under collection is 72.7 million, which just gives you the, the number. Account under DBW legal review right now, we have 24 accounts that our lawyers in DBW are looking at. Accounts escalated to the law department, we have another 37 accounts that we already finished with us, we've given it to the, to the law department. Intercity account under investigations, another 56 accounts. So we have going at them one by one.
So...
Madam Administrator?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So, Mr. Garbar, the 56 million that we've collected, because we had generally written this off as bad debt, right? Generally, we were able to collect that 56 million. As we were setting the rates, how did that 56 million impact the rates? Do we have an idea if it, you know, if it was minimal, a percent?
Sure, so when we build the model, we're looking at audit financial data, so what's built in? And also, we kind of do an estimate of where we think we'll be. We're conservative, of course, because as I mentioned, we collected the 56, that now reflects, it's going to be a little bit more difficult going forward. So there is a portion, if you will, kind of embedded within the model when we decide the rates, that we will continue to collect.
So in the model, you've built in collecting on some of the bad debt? Like, we've already considered that in the model and it's still spit out, or provided the rates that are in front of us?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
But still, just to clarify, understand accounting for bad debt and yet, and still, the rate would be impacted if we were collecting closer to industry standard in one form or fashion?
If, if we're talking just one year, it would be marginal.
Sure.
It would be right on there. If we are talking about going back years and not letting this get to this, yes, that would be, that would, that would have impacted it.
I appreciate that. Other questions from the board? Nope? Okay. All right. Seeing no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor of approving this item, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, can we do a little bit of discussion first?
Absolutely. Yes.
After all that, I didn't have my button, okay. So one of the things that I wanted to just make sure got included in this conversation because we talked about it a month ago when this was first formally proposed, but it didn't really come back up tonight, is the, the deeply historical aspect of this. Now, Ms. Namby talked a little bit about it, when, when she focused on 40 years of mismanagement by DPW, I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm not going to go that far because I think, I'm not going to say mistakes weren't made. But what I think is important for people to understand is that for 80 years before that, we collected water and sewer payments from the people of Baltimore and the enterprise fund hadn't been created yet. And so we, when we collected water and sewer bills, that money just went into the general fund and got spent on other things besides the water and wastewater system. So for most of the 20th century, instead of putting money aside to repair water mains and, and, and fix up facilities like backwater, or, or worse, actually proactively going in and replacing things before the end of its useful lifespan, we just spent that money on other good stuff that the city needed. And so we are really talking about several generations of deferred maintenance. And what I have said sometimes is that several generations of Baltimoreans kicked the can down the road. And now we're here and there's no more road. And nobody's happy about it, but it is what it is. And we can't put it off just because it's awful. It just has to be done. And so, you know, we worked with DPW extensively over the last month to go through the finances and the financial plans and ensure that this significant increase that they are asking for from the people of Baltimore is going to go to things that are needed by the people of Baltimore so that when you're trying to get to work, the intersection isn't closed because there was a water main collapse and now a giant sinkhole there. When you get home from work, you have water to make dinner and to take showers the next morning. And we won't have that if we don't take care of the system. So my office is going to keep working with DPW to make sure that they are spending that money as effectively and efficiently as it can be spent because that is what the people of Baltimore deserve. But I am going to vote yes, that we should raise these rates so that we can collect the money that we need to actually fix our system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. In this matter, I'm going to abstain, and I also want to explain my vote in this context. I, I first want to thank this administration for investing in infrastructure and taking very seriously, and I will just point to Director Zaid, you know, since you have come back into this agency, I've seen the focus and just the, yours is a challenged agency and that is putting it very, very gently. But I have deeply, deeply appreciated your focus on investing in critical infrastructure, investing in people. We just had a conversation before this about our sanitation workers and some continued concerns about their health and safety. I, I've seen you really hit the ground running and I do appreciate Administrator Leach, Mayor Scott, that there has been, in this administration, a real attempt to level set and to reset and to make critical investments that my friend and Nika and others have suggested have been lacking for very many years. I believe the analysis that we need to make investments. I believe the analysis that we are under multiple consent decrees with the EPA, with the state, around the need to improve our wastewater and sewer systems. I, I believe that this money, because I know my friend over here is going to pay very close attention, will be well spent when it comes to infrastructure investments. Where I struggle and where I cannot vote to support this increase is knowing that there has been this gap around collections. And I will appreciate that there has been work done, that 56.5 million recently, particularly on the commercial side, to address some of that gap. However, there remains significant work to do, not to get to 100%. We know we're not going to get there. You're absolutely right. There's going to be some degree in any system, not just here in Baltimore, but you're never going to get to 100. But what I would like to see Director, one year, two years, three years from now, is that we are closer to alignment with the industry standard of that 98%. And my commitment is that the city council will work directly as your partner. I, I know the comptroller mentioned as well that we are doing right by the people of this city and making sure that folks pay their fair share. It was said multiple times tonight. I think that's what our residents expect. And so, again, I appreciate the intense efforts that I have seen you and this administration make to try to come back from years and years and years of neglect in these systems. And I appreciate that on behalf of our taxpayers, we still have a, and our rate payers, we still have a very long way to go in getting it right, both in terms of the investments in our workforce, which we spoke about extensively tonight, and especially in making sure that folks who are delinquent are brought into compliance. And that does not mean tax sale, that does not mean cutting off their water or taking other draconian means, but I think there are ways that we can compel folks, whether commercial or residential, to come into compliance. So I'm going to abstain this evening and unless there is further, Madam, City Administrator?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to first start off by thanking the folks who are in the room tonight and for those who are watching in and on the WebEx and for our residents. Thank you so much for participating tonight. We absolutely heard your voices, your presence here, sticking with us throughout our debate here at the dais and being so deeply engaged is very important to this administration. It's very important to Mayor Scott. And we understand the, the concerns that you all raised and some of the solutions that you raised as well. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge you all for your efforts. Second, I want to acknowledge the members of the board. So Council President, the comptroller. I really enjoyed tonight's dialogue. I always enjoy being able to hear directly from the members of the board and to be able to have this dialogue and to do it in public in front of all of our residents. This is not an easy decision. We don't come to the rate payers and our constituents lightly to ask for a rate increase, especially after having stabilized the rate from years of very high rate increases. So I just want to, again, acknowledge all of you and the concerns that you raid, raised. And I want to be very clear that we absolutely hear you. And there are some things that we can do on our end to make sure that those of our residents that are the most vulnerable get access to our programs and that we are removing all the barriers that we can for programs like Water for All and our utility assistance program and that we are out in communities, making sure that we're connecting with residents and that we're getting our older adults and seniors signed up for these programs. So that is a charge that I'm going to take on as the city administrator, and I'm going to work in partnership with the mayor and as well as the members of this board to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to remove those barriers, to get our residents engaged and enrolled in these programs. But to the, the final point that I want to make, I think is an important one. And I mentioned earlier about how we're not going to compromise on compliance. We're not going to compromise on the quality of our system. And the comptroller is absolutely right in that there was historic disinvestment, much like in our communities. You can imagine the historic disinvestment in our water system. And that is a system that we can't compromise for the city of Baltimore. And so what you have before you and members of this body and, and the mayor and in me as the city administrator, is that I'm going to be a good steward of these fiscal resources, right? Coming to our residents and asking for $10, $12 more at a time when we know inflation is hitting all of you is something that is very difficult. And we would not do that if we didn't need to do that. And so we are going to do everything in our power to ensure that we are improving our system, that it continues to operate efficiently and effectively, that we are investing in our workforce, as the council president raised, and that we're reporting back out to our residents. We actually have information, a water report that we put on our website where we're sharing information about the quality of our system. And so the, the community engagement that you saw leading up to this, and I heard that feedback directly, what you will get from me and what you will get, have me commit to tonight, or what I am committing to tonight, is that we will do continued engagement in the community around the water system, the progress that we're making, so that you all can see that this rate increase is going into the system, is going into needed capital and project, capital improvement projects, which are resulting in a better system for you and your families. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done and for showing up and being here tonight. And we will do more to show up in communities and connect with folks about our water utility system. So thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Administrator, and just do want to take a moment, really appreciate your work in this space and just generally in working to build excellence within our agencies. So appreciate you for that. Stephen, you good? Great. All right. Seeing no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve this item.
Some...
We already did that? Okay, so...
So moved.
Second?
I think we went back. All right, let's, we're going to, let me pull it back. Entertain a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor of approving this item, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. I abstain. The item is approved. As there is no more business before the board, we will adjourn. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Estimates will occur on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. I thank everyone for participating and tuning in. Baltimore, stay safe and keep warm.